Thank you. I'm going to open up the meeting. It's about 7:04. It is March 11, 2020. This meeting is being audio and video recorded and it'll be uploaded onto YouTube and it's presently being shown on Channel 9 and will be repeated. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please remain standing, please?
While we're standing, I mention the passing of two Dayton residents, Patricia Fisher and Kerry Mason. And in their memory, I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no scheduled appointments, but I do have a few announcements. The Veteran's Service Agent will be suspended his visits to the VA for the foreseeable future due to coronavirus concerns. The Town of Dayton's food bank distribution will be held on March 21, 2020, located in the Town Hall lower level, and that will be at 8:00 a.m. The next announcement I just wanted is from the Dayton Historical Society. I'm a member of the Dayton Historical Society. I'm an officer of the Dayton Historical Society. None of us get paid. It's a volunteer group, and you should be aware that I am a member. The Psychic Fair and Craft Sale will be held on March 28, 2020, from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Old Town Hall located at 1111 Somerset Avenue. Effective April 1, 2020, the Town of Dayton will no longer accept contaminants in a single-stream recycling bin. The annual Easter egg hunt will be held on April 11, 2020, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the field located behind Town Hall. The Rabies Vaccination Day will be held on Saturday, April 25, 2020, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Dayton Animal Shelter, 821 Tremont Street. And I have an announcement from the library. The library is hosting Why the 2020 Census Matters to Dayton on Tuesday, March 24, at 6:30 at Old Town Hall, and a workshop on dementia-friendly communication on Thursday, March 26, at 6:30 at Old Town Hall. Please contact the library if you have any questions regarding that.
Mr. Chairman, I have one announcement. Mr. Pacheco and I were contacted by Phyllis Dupere from Rehoboth. Ms. Dupere is in the process of doing research on a book about old Dayton. She sent an email, and she's asking anyone who was willing to share old photos of Dayton, our modern-day counterparts, like what a section looked like in a certain time period and what it looks like now. For example, Giorgio's inside and outside, and the way it is now is the pub. Sporting events, people, places, religious events, so forth and so on. None of these submissions can have been published in the past in any form. If anyone's interested, please get in touch with Phyllis Dupere at Phyllis, let me, I'll say this out in letters, P-H-Y-L-L-I-S-B-E-E at R-C-N, R-C-N as in news, dot com. I'll leave this in the office. If anyone's interested and wants to know more about this book or would like to participate with her, I'll leave this with Mrs. Brady.
Thank you. There is no public case, or they won't be in any public--
Did you finish all the announcements?
Thought I did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think I did.
I think so, too.
I added one in there. Mrs. Glouard, there's no public case, and we won't have any public input. The Town Administrator's report, please.
Hi, good evening. We discussed at a previous meeting about developing some sort of scale for evaluations so that merit increases can be provided to non-union personnel who undergo the evaluation process. You have before you three versions. I'm not married to this. Most of this is illustrative, and I believe it's your work tonight to develop what style you want to go with and what the sums would be if you decide on either version two or version three, which develop dollar-figure amounts. So, there are three different columns here. You may even want to change the scale of .0 to .64 for points for the evaluation score. I don't know if you liked that. I didn't get any feedback previously about that, so I went with it. I think it's pretty fair how you would rank the scores. And then we here tonight have to develop how we're going to go forward with who achieved what score and what would be the, not, what would be the corresponding amount, not pulling it into who's got what, but based upon the score received. Does that make any sense, what I just said? I'm sorry.
So, I in the past have said that I'm opposed to this scale for the evaluations. I feel that if somebody does good work, fine, that's what they're supposed to be doing. If they do poor work, then maybe we wouldn't give them an increase in their pay. But I do think that if they do good work, they should get what their union members, their people that they supervise, they can get whatever raise they have, but I'm not in favor of increasing that. We're talking about the people in town who get paid the highest, and we're talking about, and I'm all in favor of the evaluations, but I don't think we ought to connect it to a pay raise. They do good, which is what they're supposed to do. Thank you for your service. You'll get your 2% or whatever it's going to be, but I don't think we should be going up to 3% or 4% because they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. So, I'm not in favor of having an increase based on the evaluation in their salaries. And my colleagues can obviously speak on this.
So, I will agree with you, Chairman Pacheco, on, perhaps I might disagree with some of the percentages on the scale, but I feel strongly in the opposite in the sense that as someone who works for a private corporation, I also expect a raise, not because I feel like it should be given to me, but because I know I work hard. I was, I am given a performance evaluation. I got a great score, and I got a raise commensurate with other individuals who got the same score. And so, this system, just to me, is the most fair and equitable. I think that the other reason I support a scale that determines what someone's merit increase is, because I want to be clear, it's not just a raise, it really is based on merit, is that we have to have a justification for the time and effort, in my mind, put into doing the evaluations. We put a lot in time and effort into creating a performance evaluation system that was fair and equitable across the board. And I think that having this scale, and again, I'm not beholden yet to what version of the scale I prefer. I think I could see tweaks in all of them, but I am committed and feel very strongly about the general idea of having one, because I feel, again, that we need to be fair and equitable across the board when we issue a merit increase. And I will note for the public that if an individual does poorly, based on what's in front of me tonight with these scales, they don't get an increase. And so, I guess that would be to the chairman's point, which I agree with. If someone is not performing, they are not quote-unquote entitled to an increase. So, I do agree. But what I also feel very strongly about is that when you have someone that's exceeding expectations, which often a lot of our employees who are very fortunate do, they should be compensated for that, because I think we all know that if we're not going to reward someone's merited hard work, they may go elsewhere where they will be. And so, I'm always have that in my back mind, back of my mind.
May I just make sure I was clear about what you see before you? It's nothing against what you said. It has nothing to, I just want you to know, these are essentially made up, and they're just meant to be illustrative of what the model would be. Okay?
So, the task that we had going way back was, Mrs. Aaronstein and I would develop the evaluation instrument done. The first year we used the instrument, we had difficulty trying to figure out how you would rate somebody if you tied these two, whether it's a percentage increase or a merit increase. Let's just call it an increase in salary. So, we got together this time. Actually, we sort of looked at it separately. Mrs. Aaronstein came up with version one, and I said to her, I looked at that, but my concern is, rather than going with percentages that are like compound in interest, we should determine dollar amounts based on the scale. Because if you're making $100,000 and your performance is maybe not the tops, the percentage of increase you might get might supersede what somebody at a lower rate that got the tippity-top score. So, if you're trying to recognize performance or merit, I think the flat dollar is a better way to go. The combination of three, I think that would exceed really what we're talking about across the board. Now, the other thing is--
Can I just mention why I put that in there?
Yep.
And it was, so, Selectman Goulart had this idea of a flat rate, and I liked it. But then I started thinking, if you only gave a flat rate to the department heads while the unions are getting percentages every year, your department head and the space between your department head and the union employees would diminish over time. So, that's there for us to talk about that point and think about it. So, I did not have an opportunity to explain that to Selectman Goulart, so I just wanted to say that.
Right. No, and I thought of that. And going forward, the, let me say, the valuation form itself and the rating scale are subject to review. Who knows? Down the road, a future board might say, there's something in that form we don't like, or we're noticing that the gap that we wanted to kind of maintain is getting smaller and smaller between employees covered by contracts and employees not covered by union contracts. So, that's, that's, this isn't cast in stone forever and ever, so I think there's that flexibility for future boards of selectmen. I think the, the method, the range, that's what I mean, the range, I think that's good, because that's really based on a numerical average of looking at the, the, I'll call them the grades they were given or the ranks they were given.
You mean the cutoff selecting--
Well, yeah.
The score, the score range.
The scores for each level.
The score range.
It's based right on that, right. So, that if it's questioned, if a person says, gee, I'm going to get X, and I thought I did such and such, the evaluation form is clear right on there, how it was calculated. It's, so you have that documentation. But anyhow, based on what, what, I think what we looked at, when I say we, I mean Mrs. Aaronstein and what I looked at, and the discussion we had, for right now, I think this is worth considering, because we're getting ready to set a FY21 budget, okay? We're only talking about for this year. And as I say, this is subject to review, as is the form going forward. But the first year we didn't have anything, so we went strictly with the percentages. But anyhow, that's how this all came about, and that's what we looked at.
I just want to thank Town Administrator Aaronstein and Selectman Goulart for working hard on this. What I think I'm hearing tonight is that it seems like two of us like this, I don't know what to call it--
Model.
Uh, rating system, rating model, score model, excuse me. Do, so, is your expectation this evening, or maybe you don't even have one, I apologize, is your thought that we would commit to the idea of this and then possibly one of these versions, but need to tweak them still? What are we thinking?
My expectation was that you would love one of these, hate one of these, and come to a happy medium. I think we do need to make a decision. We are continually putting things off, and we, I mean, we have to do this. Like, we, we have to do this for a variety of reasons. We need to give our employees the expectation of what they can expect out of that evaluation and what happens when they work hard and complete their goals, so that the guesswork is taken out of the budget process, and does it delay us? We've held a bunch of budgets because of this, because this is not figured out. It's hard to administrate. It puts us in the, you know, behind a little bit. As we get into crunch time of the finance committee's going to be meeting, they expect the budgets to be given to them. And if we don't have a decision tonight, or, you know, at the very latest next meeting--
Sure.
It's futile, and we should just decide and move forward. I like the idea, again, I just want to reiterate, I just threw numbers on a grid.
No, no, I understand.
So, I don't think that you would necessarily vote for this, and it's malleable. I love the idea of putting something in and revisiting it, but I also would like to be able to provide the employees an expectation, this is, you know, this is our plan. We've spent a lot of time on evaluations. We've spent a lot of times on perfecting that tool. It's a good process. It's a good process. It's working well. Jim Magiar, the building commissioner, said he liked it. I very much like it. It provides me a tool--
He felt like he said it helped him.
It, yes, it helps me. It provides me a tool to have a tough conversation if I need to, or to celebrate something. And let's face it, people like to hear that they did a good job once in a while. I mean, it's--
When they do a good job.
It's, when they, right, when it's deserved. So, I would like to be able to map out to our employees, this is what we've decided on going forward, this is what we're going to stick to, so that it's fair and it takes out a lot of the conversations that are had, you know, that aren't, that aren't useful.
I want to be clear to the public. So, the reason why I support this is that it takes away this whole shade of gray when an employee gets a certain raise, and then, you know, you could have a question, well, I did really good. It just, it, that situation is so avoidable by having a fair and just and equitable merit-based scale. I mean, it just, to me, it seems like a no-brainer. I understand why someone would not like it. Like, I totally get the, there's always another side to something. But I actually think that this version two I really like. I don't, I wouldn't be prepared to vote to approve it as it's here tonight, but what I do support is, A, as my colleague Selectman Goulart did, the ranges, I think, are solid. And I like the idea of a total value and not a percentage. So, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, I, I may not be beholden. I need to think a little more about the dollar value that a range means or translates to. But I like this idea of the ranges are good, and then dollar value, good. So, I really like the proposed scale version two tonight.
The other thing I took into consideration was, Mr. Pacheco and I talked about our own experiences being state employees. On version two, if you block out the dollars that are in the left column and only go with the percentages, okay? Again, the percentages are based on hard facts. They're based on the actual evaluation. So, I think that's good. I think that's very solid. The board needs to look at the column on the left, as, as Dr. Zieg said, whether or not, as, as the Town Administrator said, these are sample numbers. So, based on the solid rating in the right column, does the board want to look at the proposal, the dollar value in the left column and say, well, I think that should be this, or should be that? Once that's determined, let's assume that the board agrees, version two is the rate, the method we're going to use, and it comes up with dollars, they agree. If that's done, you can actually set a budget for increases, like you talked about, there's a budget for increases, you and I talking about state employment. There is a budget to cover increases for our non-union personnel. You would know pretty much a range, and unless there was a horrendous change in someone's performance or whatever, that number is going to be a pretty good number.
That's a good point.
Now, each year, the Board of Selectmen can look at the number in the left column and decide whether or not is that, do we want to stay there? Do we want to keep it? Do we want to change it? So, that, that would be flexible. But again, the right column is solid.
And the--
So, you do have that control.
I agree with that. I agree with that 100%. I'm really behind this right column. And for the public, the right column, if you're not following on, is the scale, the range, excuse me.
The performance ranking.
Yeah. I actually think version one is good, too, but I actually, I agree very strongly with Chairman Pacheco. Since I've been here, rarely have we done a 4%. I, we may have. But I like zero, .5, 1, 2, and 3. And 3 would be like, you know, you were perfect. You just really exceeded expectations at every turn. But, but again, I really like this version two. I, I think we should think about the dollar value if that's where we want to go, but the concept of it, the, the range translates to a flat dollar amount, I, I like that idea a lot.
And as I say, we need, we need to start somewhere. And I've, I've shared the actual evaluation instrument that we use with people that, that attend MMA, MMA meetings and said, does anybody do professional evaluations? And I said, Dayton does. And we've shared the form, and they've talked about how great it is, and they've probably made minor adjustments to address their own circumstances. So, what my suggestion is, if, the version we decide tonight, percentage, right column is solid, come up with the left column if you want changes made. We go with that for FY21, and each year, if we follow a procedure, the Board of Selectmen at budget time will look back and say, what did we do for '21? Do we want to make any changes? Do we need to do whatever? You've still got that much flexibility.
I really like that.
Because we will be using not only the performance evaluation and this model to determine what someone's merit increase will be, but also we're helping the employee develop professionally, but also we're developing professionally. We're modifying a system that, quite frankly, is almost miraculous. Like, we did not have this since I started and you started. I mean, we started around the same time. I mean, I just think it's, it's a big improvement. I'm really proud of it. And I know, I think we all should understand, things will always be tweaked. Nothing is ever perfect. But I like the fact that it sounds like we're committing to a performance evaluation system that's based on fairness, and I think that that's a big step forward for everyone.
And just, just to build on what you said, if I were the employee, and let's say I ended up on the second step here, okay, which means my score was somewhere between .65 and .74, well, if I look and say, wow, the next range is .75 to .84, one, one little number.
Tenth of a point.
If I had, if I had completed my, I'll say my goals, if I had completed all of my goals, or if I had finished that project that I said I was going to do, I would have been bumped up to that next number. It's, it's an incentive, looking at, because this is going to be all public information. So, anyhow.
Reiterate what I said the last time we discussed this.
Yep.
Maybe I'm a little old-fashioned. If I do a good job, I feel good. When I worked for the state, first 32 years working for the state, I was a union member. I got whatever the union members got. My last three years, when I got my final promotion, I got evaluated. Whether I had a good or bad evaluation, I got the same pay that everybody else. I felt good when I did a good evaluation. I got the promotion because I did good work. I didn't feel like I needed to get extra money because I'm doing my job and I'm doing it well. So, these, as, I'll say it again, these are the highest-paid employees in this town, and we're talking about possibly giving them a 3%, 4% raise. When very hard-working people who are in the union may be getting a 2% raise. So, I am opposed to this. I supported the evaluation process that we came up with. Never did I think that we were going to use that as a way to give somebody a raise. You have a good evaluation, good for you. You're doing a good, good job, I'll shake your hand. You're going to get maybe 2%, whatever your union members are getting. But I, I am totally opposed to giving increases in pay to our top, money-wise, top employees for doing what they should be doing. So--
It's definitely true, Chairman Pacheco. You're absolutely right. Department heads can be amongst the highest-paid individuals in a municipality. Absolutely right. No one, no one would disagree with that. However, what I would say is, they're managing a department, so a manager should be the highest-paid individual in that department. So, they have the biggest, you know, so it's, it's, it is just, it is justified based on workload and responsibility as well.
I get why they get paid the highest. I get that. But when you talk about a 3% and 4% raise, you're, you're giving it, it's not the average wage earner who's getting that 3% or 4%, it's, it's the highest-paid person. So, it's $100,000. You give it a 4% increase, that's $4,000, say a person's making $100,000. So, these are all, the people we're talking about who get these evaluations, most of them are the highest-paid employees in town. So, I just, I just think we're going, as a taxpayer, I just can't support that.
I agree with you. I would not support version one.
Yeah, I agree. I think, can we, can we, we should definitely be clear. It doesn't sound like any of us support version one--
I'm focused on two, quite frankly.
--in a 4% raise.
I'm, I'm really focused on--
And they were just illustrating.
Correct.
I'm not advocating for anyone to get--
No, no, no.
Correct.
The document you have in front of you, other than the percentages, which are based on the solid numbers off of the evaluations, they're not in dispute. They're there, and they can be shown to each individual employee. The board has reviewed them. You can look at them again. The number in the left column is a dollar amount, and to me, that's the number. If the board feels that the dollars does not, the dollars do not equal the rating, then those dollars need to be adjusted. I certainly agree that 3% and 4% are out of the question. I also have to have been an employee, a public employee, most of my life. I got percentages when I was at the regional high school. When I went to the university, the first six years at the institute were based on percentages. My last six and a half, seven years in the audit department was strictly based on evaluations. Even though I had to do an evaluation to get the percentage increase, nobody was in the union in the president's office. So, the, the last six and a half, seven years, whatever it was, was strictly based on performance evaluation, whether or not you accomplished the goals, how you handled, I'll call them spur-of-the-moment assignments, drop this and take this, and how you, how you get that work done. I don't know the rating scale they used. I went through the interview process. When I say interview, they were meetings discussing performance and stuff. But I feel, right now, based on everything we had to take, when I say we, Mrs. But I feel, right now, based on everything we had to take, when I say "we," Mrs. Ehrenstein, I had to take into consideration concerns about percentages, concerns about widening gaps, concerns about compounding increases, if you only use percentages. And also going with a fixed amount based on performance, that you could actually end up with a budget number with names, and the name and the dollars and all of that. My other thought is, in the public sector, unlike the private sector, it's not an open-ended budget. You just throw money away and give it, and whatever. That isn't how it works. The bottom line is, in the public sector, there are few things that you can give to a non-union employee in the way of recognition that in the private sector you can do. And, you know, I think about the recruiting process that's going on right now to get people to enter the public sector, and the shortage of qualified people that there are in the public sector. And yes, we have good benefit packages. And yes, if you stay long enough, you're gonna earn a decent salary. And yes, you have sick leave and all that. That stuff is also in the private sector. But the private sector generally pays higher. So I'm trying to figure out the best way to come up with a fair and equitable process based on the evaluation form. And I know when the decision was made that Mrs. Ehrenstein and I would develop a professional evaluation form, the rating scale, and to be able to set that, or attach it to, or somehow recognize performance dollar-wise, that was way back in the beginning, because when we discussed budget last year, and I realize you may not have been here when that was talked about. Last year, I remember both Mrs. Ehrenstein and I said, "Well, we got the evaluation done. It works. We've got that down pat." We could not come up with something in time for budget this year that we could say, "Okay, this is what we think it should be." So anyhow, I think this is what, version two is what I think we have come up with, our best effort for the first time we attempt something like this. And if the board feels that version two is worth considering, then we need to look at the column on the left.
I just wanted to speak for just a moment about taxpayers, because Chairman Pacheco is absolutely right. These types of things do affect taxpayers. But I also wanna remind people that the output of a department head's work is a service that's provided to the taxpayer. So when we reward someone for good work, what we're saying is, "You did good work that positively benefited the people who pay your salary." And so I think that it's a good thing. What I will also say is, to Selectmen Gulart's point about private industry, you're absolutely right, everything you said about private industry. But private industry has figured out a couple things that do work. And one of them that they have figured out is an evaluation system that's based on a percentage. And yes, private industry people absolutely get paid more. So I'm not advocating that a municipal employee should make exactly the same as a private industry employee with a comparable position. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, if they're doing an evaluation system, and they've figured out that the way to retain the best and the brightest is to have a performance evaluation system that when someone does good, the reward for the employee for doing, exceeding expectations, because I wanna be very clear to the public, the reward isn't for "you did your job." The reward is, "You went above and beyond." And again, the output is, "You serviced the people who pay your salary, who are the taxpayers." I don't think an increase is necessarily, someone has an entitlement or a right to it. It's earned. And the performance evaluation system that we have devised, that Selectmen Gulart and Town Administrator Ehrenstein worked very hard on over the last one, two years, implementing it and then tweaking it, the output again is, "Public service." And so I just think that we need to positively reward and incentivize people to not just meet expectations, that's the baseline expectation, but to go above and beyond. So those are my two cents.
That's a good, I want to just touch on that. The point zero to point six-four, which is the first category of ranking, that is a score of an individual, this is like fake, but like getting a three, which is meets expectations in each category and accomplishing all four goals. So that is meeting what is required essentially for not having an issue in performance. So I just wanted to make that clear, that they're in no, other than version three, which is meaningless, but the baseline is actually zero.
Zero, exactly.
And if the number is three, that equates with that, not only is it meets, you know, they're just, the rest of that, to me, is needs improvement.
Right.
You've got to, you know, if you get that rating, you really need to take a look and see, and quite frankly, reach out to administration and say, "What could I do to improve this, or I'm having trouble with this, I need help?" There's nothing wrong with asking for help.
I know I'm beating a dead horse, but this is not the private sector. This is the public sector, and two of us have worked in the public sector. The money isn't unlimited. It may be in the business, they have a lot of money. This is taxpayers' money. And if you're on a fixed income, we're talking about giving people raises to people who make the highest income in the town, where a lot of our residents have never made that kind of money. So I'm just so totally opposed to this. I think each individual contract, we ought to discuss, talk about it, give them whatever raise we think is appropriate, look at the evaluation, but I don't think we ought to have a set for doing this. If they're doing a great job, they should be doing a great job. If they're doing a poor job, they shouldn't get a raise. So any version of this, I appreciate the work that you both have done on this, but any version of this, I'm not gonna support.
If we have two employees, two department heads, who both have the exact same rating, if we don't have a fixed sum, how do we give one X and the other one Y?
That's my issue, Selectmen Gulart.
That's, I'm very uncomfortable with that.
Me too. And we know it's raised. There have been questions in the past when things like that inevitably happen.
The only raise that I can think of that was above what we normally see as percentages, and I'm the one who presented it at a town meeting, was for one individual who the Board of Selectmen unanimously voted was underpaid, and we felt that the amount of money that we were asking for was reasonable. I made the case at town meeting, and yes, it passed. That was a unique circumstance, and the vote is agreed. So...
And you should also mention, though, that the person that you're talking about did not ask for that raise.
That's correct.
So it's not like people are out there, employees are out there saying, "Give me this big raise because I'm doing my job."
That was, that truly was, if you will, a recognition of the job, the salary established, and the raises that had been given over a period of time did really not rise to the level of the responsibility and the performance of that individual, okay? But to get back to the whole thing about the professional evaluation form, the concern was that there were, or that could be perceived inequalities in giving raises to department heads, even if you said, base it on the union contract for the people they supervise. Because again, you would be compounding the percentages, and those, the people, department heads on the higher end of the scale would be getting that percentage with substantially more than other department heads who were probably working just as hard, but their salary happened to be at a lower level. So, again, I tried to take into consideration everything that was my understanding when it was agreed, we would develop a professional evaluation, and that there would be eventually some method of, I'll call it money attached to it. So I...
Conservation? Conservation? Are they meeting across? They might be at Old Town Hall, which is 1111 Somerset Avenue. Thank you.
So I think that what we've come up with, again, it's just a best effort. Do I think that now that we have a professional evaluation with a rating system and a sample, this is a sample, the left column is a sample on this sheet, that we have a sample of suggested increases based on performance? Do I think the two work together? Yes. Should we look at the numbers? We can. I'm amenable to that. The left column, we can make some changes in the numbers. But I think what we have accomplished is exactly what the assignment was, going back. And again, it's not cast in stone. I'm looking for something we can use this year, like last year. We had the evaluation, we did it, we built on it. This year, we did it again. Everyone was prepared for what that form was gonna look like, did their self-evaluations, knew the process, probably felt a little more comfortable with it this year. Now we have, I think we've put the final brick on this platform, what we were told needed to be done. And we're gonna try it out, I hope, this year. And then when next year comes, there's another shot at it. If the numbers don't work on the left-hand side, the dollar increase, there's room for discussion. I think we all agree that the percentages in the right col, not the percentages, the ratings in the right column, because they're built on solid evaluations, they're there, unless you change the entire system. But I can only say, we think, when I say "we," Mrs. Ehrenstein and I think, this is our best shot at trying to accomplish what the full assignment was when the decision was made, you two come up with a professional evaluation, so.
And I, just so the public is aware, because I think at that time, probably that finance committee meeting was not being taped, but when Selectmen Gulart refers to assignment, this was a conversation that originally started with the finance committee over questions they had over how the fairness surrounding how department heads receive their merit increases. So this is sort of the culmination of that discussion and that partnership with finance committee that started, I believe, either last fiscal year or the one before that.
It goes back further than that, because I was actually on the finance committee. This has come up periodically. Why are there guaranteed increases in salary? Why does a department head always get what, the same percentage that the people they supervise? The stark answer was, "Well, that's how it's always been." And the response was, "But this should have more to it. No one should have an automatic increase." And as we saw, the finance committee took steps, mirso go, and made some reductions in, not department heads per se, elected officials increases with automatic, whatever they were. But...
Well, I also agree that they shouldn't automatically get a, say, to two percent. If they're doing a lousy job, they should get no raise. If they're doing a good job, they should get, like I said before, whatever the union employees that they supervise.
But this first line would be the lousy job you're talking about.
We may actually save money from...
But this, what about the other lines, though? So somebody scores...
No, no, we gotta, excuse me. This is a sample.
I'm going by the numbers that are in front of me.
But this is only a sample.
Okay, whatever the figure is, if you scored a hundred percent on your evaluation, did well, you're gonna get, this figure is arbitrary, twenty-five hundred dollars, whether you're working full-time or you're a department head and you're working, you're not working full-time. So you're saying, someone's gonna get that raise, right? There were people, department heads who aren't working full-time are gonna get possibly a twenty-five hundred dollar raise because they had an excellent evaluation, and somebody who's working full-time is gonna get the same.
Would that be? Who's a part-time department?
I don't wanna mention names because we're talking, but there is somebody who's not working all the hours.
So I believe, in my mind, I think we're talking about the same person, and that person has told me that they are not the department head, and that it is somebody else in that department. So this might be, well, maybe we're not thinking of the same thing.
We're not talking about the same person. You do an evaluation on this person.
We did the evaluation, like I did the evaluation on the person? Okay, no, we're not talking about the same person.
So anyway, we're beating a dead horse. I'm not supporting any of these. That's, and you two can pick out which one you support, obviously.
I just wanna be clear, Selectmen Gulart, before we proceed in any direction on this, can you please explain why version two may save money versus having the department heads raise, follow the union?
Again, because the percentage will vary based on what their salary is. So if a, well, an example, if a person is making a hundred thousand dollars, and they get two percent, it's two thousand dollars. Based on the evaluation, now we have a department head that's making sixty thousand, got the exact same point value, two percent of sixty thousand is not two thousand. What I'm saying is, I'm trying to figure out an equitable way to recognize performance. And I, this was the best thing that, in the discussions, that came up. So we have the percentage, we have the flat, I'll call it, flat rate, and then we have a combination. And since this will be the first year, that's why I'm looking at two. Yeah, I'm gonna close this with two.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
The other, if you have a general rule that you just go with whatever the union is getting, that's what they get, there's no incentivization.
I said, if somebody's doing a lousy job, they're gonna get zero.
Yep.
Somebody's doing a good job, they're gonna, in my opinion, get probably what the union they're supervising, get whatever they're getting, two percent, whatever it ends up being.
How do we know they're doing a good job or not?
But whoever's doing, so you have two different departments, different union contracts, different negotiations, different raises. They're both doing a good job, say they get the same score. They're getting a different increase for getting the same score, so.
That's how it's not fair.
Because their employees are getting a different pay scale, that's...
But that's why it's not a good system.
We've negotiated, so.
So I don't know if you want to move along, or...
I wanna move along. I just, that's why I said, if you, I'm gonna pose all three versions up. So you two need to come up with some kind of agreement as to what you're both seeking.
I like version two, Selectmen Gulart.
So my question is, does anyone on the board feel that the numbers in the left column of version two should be changed? And if so, just throw out a number.
The only number that I think we should consider changing is the last one, and I think we should consider two thousand instead of twenty-five hundred. Other than, and that's just so the public is aware, the scale increases on each range, five hundred dollars. On the last one, the difference between a perfect score and fifteen points less is a thousand dollars. So I am proposing to make it five hundred to two thousand, not twenty-five hundred.
I don't have a problem with that. Do you wanna make?
It's your hard work. I'm gonna happily second it or make the motion, whatever you want.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that for FY '21, the board adopt version two of the proposed scale with the first increase step zero, second step five hundred, third step one thousand. These, I'm sorry, these aren't steps. First rating zero, second rating five hundred, third rating one thousand, fourth rating fifteen hundred, and the last one being two thousand. That would be for a salary, that would be for a performance range that averages between ninety-five, point nine-five, and one point zero zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, I oppose. abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you for your help with that, Selectmen Gulart.
I'll ask one other thing. Just if you have a chance for either the next meeting, because I don't know if we're having a special or regular, either the next meeting or the next regular meeting, whatever you can do, could you throw some numbers together and tell us what this is gonna cost?
What that will equate out to?
Yes, just so that we have an idea. And if you don't mind, do a version one.
I do not mind at all.
Okay, so that we can just...
Compare.
Yeah, and for future boards...
We voted on this, though, right? It was voted on, so I'm not sure why we're gonna revisit this.
I just ask you some additional information.
Okay, the next, you have in your packets a memo from me. There are a handful of contracts coming up for renewal with various options. This memo is basically requesting us to exercise some of those options. So I am requesting that the board extend the contract for cleaning services for, hold on, I think I put this to one year each, so that they would come up together. Sorry, I recommend the town schedule, extend it for one-year period. Yeah, so for the cleaning of Town Hall, Old Town Hall, and the library, to be extended for one year.
Is that the same figure from the previous year?
Yes. So costs would remain the same. We're extending the same level of service and the same buildings. We're extending the same level of service and the same buildings. And then to do the same.
So we're not increasing if they do a good job, then we just stay with the, the figure?
Well, these were bid out, so practicing public procurement, we're working to get the best price available. The other one is the police station. It is the same cleaning company. We did bid these out separately because the services are different and in higher. However, I'm asking that these be extended for one year each. We do have an option for two years for this, for the Town Hall, Old Town Hall and Library. But I want them both to come up at the same time so we can do it all together for procurement-wise. And the other contract I'm looking to extend is the John Guilfoyle Public Relations Firm contract. I think this is a very good service that we are providing. And they're certainly at the ready for the coronavirus things we have going on. And they've made good on all their work, all their different websites. They're up and running, they're beautiful, and they're a great communicative tool for us to share news and not rely on local media, but to do it ourselves. And so I'm asking for that contract to be extended as well.
So all three contracts, it's the same figure that we had contracted before, then?
Actually, with Guilfoyle, it goes down because we've received the websites. And so this was, the service is the same.
Is the same, okay.
Yes.
Does the board have any questions?
I don't. I think you asked the important one, which is, was it the same as last fiscal year?
I'll entertain a motion then, if there's no questions.
Do we have to do these as three separate ones?
I would do the cleaning ones, yes, please. I'm sorry, three separate ones. Yep, there's three separate contracts, so yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we.
Extend?
Ex- actually, I'm going to retract that because that's going to get too confusing. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to start with Guilfoyle. I vote that we, I motion, excuse me, that we renew the contract with John Guilfoyle Public Relations for a total service cost of $11,348 to be split equitably between the Town of Dayton, the Dayton Fire Rescue and Dayton Police Department.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Are, is the top one MNS as well?
Don't look at the top one, look at that middle paragraph.
Okay.
That top paragraph is telling you that you have the option to extend this cleaning service for two years, but I'm looking for just one.
You were looking for the middle one. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend for a one-year period the Town of Dayton's contract with MNS cleaning for a total annual cost of $16,500.
Second.
Any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
He did a really good job on those, uh, Dayton Fire Rescue website and the police department was really good, by the way.
The electric vehicle chargers, this update is really just an announcement. They are available for public use. We've got two, one's at Old Town Hall, one's at Town Hall. They will be striping appropriate lines for parking so that you pull right up, but that comes in the spring. Hardy, hearty thanks to Mrs. Brady, Jim Aguirre, the members of the Highway Department who did the concrete footing, and of course, National Grid and Mass D O E R. This was a free program through rebates and green communities designation funds. And I'm, they're symbolic of us moving forward and it's pretty great. So thank you to everybody. This last item I have, based upon what happened at our Soil Conservation Board, I had some time to reflect and I am making a recommendation that the bylaw be rewritten and the authority for this not be how it is written in the current bylaw, but rather go to the Conservation Commission. There were some things that I saw that were just organizationally and set up, like how it's, how it works systemically is just not working.
There are appointees of the board on.
On the committee.
So you just mean structurally.
Yes, thank you.
It, it creates.
Friction.
Imperfect, imperfections in just the functionality.
And issues fraught with, you know, employees should not have to choose between two superiors. Putting people in that position is not great, not great for a lot of reasons. I also found it difficult, you were sitting how you sit here right now. And that's, you know, Chairman Pacheco, who's the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, is not the chairman of the Soil Conservation Board. It's a different chairman. It happened to switch that meeting. And that creates a whole nother dynamic. So I'm trying to remove this. I think the bylaw was written in the eighties. That's a different time. We have a lot more layers of laws and conduct that we can't, we can't really operate this way. Open meeting law comes into question. Various things work against the board as it is set up, the Soil Conservation Board as it is set up. So I'm recommending that we remove the membership that currently is written in the bylaw. We propose changing this bylaw at town meeting and move the authority to the Conservation Commission. It's, they already have cease and desist power. They can do a lot more with it based upon their own power and statutes available to them than the Soil Conservation Board can. So I thought that would be a nice, not nice, but an appropriate department for it to go under.
So to your point about having it be the Conservation Commission, so I support this. Part of the reason why I support this is one of the issues that we dealt with on the Soil Conservation Commission did, issues were raised around a cease and desist that was issued from the conservation. And then it raised larger issues of can an independent, at that time, right, Soil Conservation Commission consider a cease and desist from another board? And so for me personally, now just only speaking for myself, it makes more sense having that authority be the Conservation Commission because when they issue a cease and desist for a separate issue and, and they also have authority over soil mining, now they can enforce, right, because they have that.
Multifaceted.
Everything will intertwine. And so I think it might be more seamless. I do have one question. In you, so you included two versions. You included the version that you crafted and then you included the version that I had edited.
Oh, that's a mistake. This is me recommending that we have a definition for mining and Selectmen's Grogus created that definition.
Okay, so to that point, and I don't, I apologize if I'm complicating everything. So in the second.
That one in your left hand, your left hand.
This is the one?
That's the one, yes.
So there was a resident at the Soil Conservation Commission who said, and, and I only caught it at, very briefly, I had to follow up with them after, that there actually is a definition for mining. And so that prompted me to go dig in the good old Massachusetts general laws.
No pun intended.
Pun intended on that one.
What are we at with puns tonight? Let's turn 10, we're good, we're doing well.
I'm on a roll, actually, didn't mean that one. I want to be clear with the board. In the third paragraph where it says, for the purposes of this bylaw, quote, "mining shall mean", that definition did come from MGL, I forget which exact one it is. In that specific law, however, it's not mining soil, it was specifically mining coal. So I just want to be very clear that the only thing the state had on the books regarding their definition for mining was the definition that I have provided here, but it was not for soil. So I just want to be clear. The town administrators' version, just to button this up, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. The town administrators' version, the first one, Selectman Goulart, that does not include a definition. So it might actually be a good thing you.
No, just extract it. I don't, I, that was me just developing something.
We might like, if we, I guess my thought is, if we pro- no, 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 I didn't mean to. If we proceed on this, we might want, if they're going to have a new authority, we might want them to define mining. I actually like that you kept the version without it defined in there for that reason.
So do we know if there's other towns that you need to get a permit to remove soil from that town and move it to another town?
I do not know that.
How did they do it in West Bridgewater?
Didn't have something like this in West Bridgewater.
That leads me to believe it's not normal. But there are tipping fees, like towns do do that.
There are towns, because I remember somebody getting in touch with us, saying, do you have a soil bylaw, whatever?
I recall that.
And I'm trying to think, is it Berkeley? I'm not, somebody did contact us, but I'm not sure who it was.
I mean, we didn't have a ton of land available in West Bridgewater. Like, it was very developed. We here have large expanses of land.
So the 30 years that we've had this bylaw, how many people have we, how many permits have we issued in the 30 years?
I do not, I do not know.
We literally had to create a permit for the last, the only individual since I've been an elected official.
Which we've kind of forced him out of town now, unfortunately, so. I'm not even sure we should be requiring people to have a permit to take soil out of town.
The only issue with that, so I actually agree with you, Chairman Pacheco, but I think until this authority is quote-unquote addressed, then it's going to stay with the soil. So I agree with you 100%. We need, I just feel like we need, we may not need to do what's here, but we need to do something, is, is my, my position.
We can ask that that bylaw be eliminated.
Just repeal it.
I don't think you can do that.
You have to have tipping fees, I think.
Because it's tied into stormwater now, and if you disturb land, you will, that, when you disturb the land, you cause a disruption that's, so my impression was, first of all, I don't think it goes far enough. Number one, the first Soil Board I sat on meeting had no idea what we were doing and what we were supposed to do. My other thought is, it should not, if we're going to have a Soil Board, it should not be a board appointed by the Board of Selectmen. It should be an elected board, and I'm, I'm looking more towards the Planning Board. Now, I don't know if Conservation would even agree to do this. I don't know if Planning would. But if, if we're going to move it away from, I'll call it influence, an elected board is a better way to go. Now, who, whoever serves on this committee, and I don't think it needs to be a lot of people, whether it's three people, five people, whoever sits on this board has got to be aware of all of the interconnections of other boards. We now have a stormwater committee that serves under the Board of Health. We have a Conservation Commission. We have a Planning Board. They're all interconnected somehow. As I said in that meeting last night, I was looking at some things that reference Planning Board, and yet they dealt with stormwater. So all of this has to be looked at so that this Soil Board understands the operation of all these interconnected boards, has the power to take action, whether cease and desist or whatever is appropriate, and is not in conflict with another board's regulations.
Authority.
Authority, stormwa- excuse me, Conservation has to look at the, you know, the clean water and all that other stuff. So there is so much interconnection now and these things have developed that weren't here when this board got formed. But whoever sits on that board, I think, would, would be better educated than I was when I went to my first Soil Board meeting, had no idea what it was about, none at all. And no one explained to me what it was, what we was, what are we supposed to do?
You just get handed the regs.
It's your title.
I didn't even get that one for us.
It was, um.
We had to, we had to look up.
It's another committee and you're on it. Well, what does that mean? But anyhow, I think it definitely needs work. I think it needs to go further. I think it needs to be a separate independent board, not appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And the, and the good thing is, I said Planning Board. No, they haven't been approached. And if anyone's hearing this, they're probably saying, we don't need more work. But it's not a board that meets very often, so, but.
The Soil Board is not a board that meets very often, you mean?
Correct. So, so if, if it is assigned or is accepted as a duty by members of another board, three members of a, an elected board, I think, I think it would, I think that would work better, I really do.
So I agree with a lot of what Selectman Goulart has said, but I also, and, excuse me, not but, I also agree with a lot that Chairman Pacheco has said. It's clear, though, that the regulation, the bylaw created the Soil Conservation Commission. So I'm kind of agreeing with Chairman Pacheco that the, that bylaw would need to be, what's the right word?
Revised.
Revised.
Are you trying to get, Selectman Goulart's looking to revise it. I was seeking to revise it, but it sounds like Chairman Pacheco is looking to repeal it.
Okay, let me be, I'm sorry. I really don't, probably revised makes more sense because there would be a period of time where you wouldn't have anything on the book. So I think that could be problematic as well.
Well, one day, I originally questioned why this, this was set up this way. This was going back when I first began. And we had, you had Soil Committee meetings. They were happening and I was reading the bylaw, I, excuse me, the bylaw, the regulations, the minutes from previous meetings about a certain business. And I couldn't understand why it would have been developed. And I told Tom Ferry in passing one day, like, why do we even need this? This seems so antiquated. And he gave me, and I can't remember it naturally, but he told me why and he convinced me, okay, don't get rid of it. He, he convinced me. And it was about, you know, the land and you can't disturb it too much where coastal community, you have to.
I agree with tipping fees as well. Like, when you mine Dayton soil and then you try to move it outside of Dayton, like, I have heard of other, like, tipping fees are a thing. That is an established thing.
There's also very unique characteristics here with having a cold water river plus the Tonton River watershed. So moving our, it's dirt, yes, but moving it is a bigger deal than maybe moving dirt inland somewhere. So he, he convinced me that it shouldn't be. I'm just explaining why I think it should be revised and not repealed totally.
I think revise the bylaw, but also revise the regulations because I think they're confusing. Have a true definition of what you're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely.
If somebody issues a cease and des- a Soil Board, separate Board, they issue a cease and desist. It clearly spells out what is to cease and what is to desist. It could be the whole operation, it could be a function. But because, because we were not up to our eyeballs in stormwater regs way back then, if we didn't have a Soil bylaw and have a board, all of this would end up with the Stormwater Committee. Because now we know if you disturb more than 35,000 square feet, that means clearing, cutting, clearcutting a piece of property. It means digging a hole. It means generally disturbing. It's got to go to them. And again, that's an appointed board that's got connections to all these other things. That's why I'm saying, move it out, separate, distinct, revise the bylaw, revise the regs so that when the Soil Board meets, they've got a clear guideline. And people who, who come in.
Know what it.
Here's the bylaw and these are the regs.
So the elect, so I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So this new entity, which would be an elected board, like, that already exists, I guess is what we're saying, that takes on this responsibility and is willing, they would revise the bylaw. And then once they were, got, you know, the bylaw was, let's say, adopted at a town meeting, right? So now they're the permitting authority. Then they revise the regulations. Is this what we're talking about?
What I, I would do both of them because I'm thinking of, for example, we have stormwater bylaw and regs. And when we were formulating this way back when, we needed a public, a public hearing in the newspaper for the bylaw itself. We needed a public meeting to review the regs, which are voluminous. What I'm thinking of is get the bylaw done, get the regs done so that you can prevent, excuse me, present the bylaw and actually, you could say, and we have the regulations too. Let's try to get this all done at a meeting. So we can take this to town meeting, we answer all the questions at that one meeting, get all of that done as opposed to two steps, and then send the bylaw to town meeting. The regs don't have to be approved at a town meeting, but the bylaw does. But we could encompass a whole thing.
Well, do we have time for this? I mean.
Well, I got, I mean, we got to put something on the warrant. So that warrant closes on April 8th. And I mean, we can put something together. I don't think we can, I don't know whose job it is to look at the, the regulations. I agree, I think there needs some serious definitions in there.
It would be the authority that was, it would be the entity taking, assuming authority.
I just saw a lot of problems that could arise from how it's set up.
We totally all agree with that.
So I think, I think eradicating it is what needs to happen and providing the, the authority to some, to some other entity. Whatever that entity is, I don't know.
I need you to be very clear. You don't mean eradicate, you mean revise it.
I want to eradicate the Soil Board, Soil Review Board, and put the removal of soil permitting job duty under the Conservation Commission.
But that requires the bylaw.
This bylaw accomplishes it. How we've rewritten it and presented it tonight accomplishes what I'm, I'm seeking to do.
Has Khan Com agreed to do it?
No. I mean, I thought I would get more of a fight here, actually, so I didn't.
Wait, wait, wait. So I actually like where this conversation is going. So can we, now that it sounds like, you know, things would need to be worked out, but the concept of what you've presented sounds like what we're okay with. Could you approach.
Absolutely.
Planning and Conservation, I like Selectman Goulart.
Conservation's meeting tonight, so I don't know if you want to walk over to.
Yeah, can someone phone them?
We need one of those like soup things with the.
Let's ask them first. I feel like my thought is, and I want to hear what my colleagues. Let's ask them first. I feel like my thought is, and I wanna hear what my colleagues have to say. My thought is, if we get buy-in from the entity, let's say Planning says, yeah, we'd love to deal with soil issues. I don't know why they would say that, but let's say they do, okay? We could insert their name here, and we could, we could present an article, and they could tweak it too, actually, if they had time. But this might set forth, this would do the trick into. There would be, need some work to be done, but I think this would get the ball rolling.
The work is in the regulations.
We've got to have the public hearing before the town meeting, because it's a bylaw change. Definitely have to do that.
Yep, absolutely, yeah, yep.
Well, it's a general bylaw, not zoning.
We, you're right on the technicality, but when we did stretch Energy Code, you do it because it's just.
You're desiring public input.
You want the public to understand, like, what this is.
Well, we're gonna have a long meeting for whatever that is, so there's a lot of bylaw changes coming.
And, and Stormwater, we created a whole new thing.
Okay.
You know.
So, great. Thank you, everybody. I will approach those two and see who draws the short straw, I guess, but.
But, when we get the buy-in, then we should give them this template, is what I'm gonna call it, boilerplate, I guess, and just see if this is acceptable. I mean, obviously, remove what the definition of mining is. That's something this new entity with the authority would need to, we would want them to do, but I think this is, I don't know, what are you?
They should define that in the by, they should define that in the regulations.
But I want, I only put this in because.
Because they could change it on a whim, not on a whim, but a whim, it can change.
Without a town meeting vote.
I think the definition, I feel strongly about that, that the definition should be in the.
But they need to come up with, it should not, because I wrote this. It's like, the whole point is, we don't want me, right? But a member of the Board of Selectmen writing it, so, we want them to do this.
And this is a little confusing. The mining and removal of sand, gravel, loam, or soil from land in Dyton. So, if I'm building a house, I'm taking soil out for the foundation, and I'm moving it down the street, do I need to permit for that?
No, no, it's outer, I, it's outside the town of Dyton, I thought.
I thought it was lot.
It says, the mining and removal of sand, gravel, alone, or soil, what doesn't say that here, though.
Right. But the regulations specify the forty yards amount, and we are so in the weeds, but yeah, that.
Pun intended.
Don't say weeds, buddy.
This is the month of green.
I'm distracted.
So, but, I mean, this right here.
I listened to Santana on my way here, so I was, I was thinking of the same.
Good choice.
But, that example you just gave, this is what the problem was created when they were building the police station. It never left town.
Yes.
But there was a to-do about it.
You're right.
Okay, so, um, yeah.
Whoever it is, we're really selling this job.
You raise points that lead me to believe even more so that it should be
line up to want it.
the other entity that does all that defining. They have to deal with it.
Should be the ones that come up with the regulations.
But it's a good problem to deal with, if you're them.
It's important. Okay, thank you very much. And I appreciate your open-mindedness.
Good work on that.
On that, thank you.
Okay, moving right along. On the old business reviewer, and thank you very much for your reports. Old Business Reviewer approved.
Excuse me, could I just say one thing? I'm sorry I didn't get back to you on this one, but this was something we talked about on one of our many. I did hear from Constellation Energy.
You did?
I was going to look into it. Constellation Energy is the MMA, Charlotte D'Amato.
Yeah, yeah.
The good news, the new rate that the town of Dyton municipal buildings, not the average, not the homeowners, no. Municipal buildings will be zero dollar sign, zero point zero nine nine five from April twenty twenty to December twenty twenty-two.
Yep.
The thing that I've gotta forward to you, because I, I just scribbled it on here, and she needs permission to research our records. So, I'm gonna forward that email to you, so you can fill out the form and say, you can now look at our records, because they're ready to negotiate a contract starting after December of twenty twenty-two.
Great, great news.
So, I think, is it one point oh four three, or something we're paying?
For the public?
Everyone's paying under aggregation. But again, the deal was, if they could get a penny savings over whatever, so anyhow, we will have some savings in our electrical bills.
Perfect.
Starting in April. So, that, that's really good. That's, that came through that MMA program. So, that's very good.
Good work.
Very good.
Okay, getting back to Old Business Review and Approved Clerical Union Education Incentive for Jonathan Gray, ZBA Office Manager. Everybody had an opportunity to take a look at the resume?
Yes.
Quite the resume.
It is. I'm impressed. I think, my personal feeling is that we should give him the educational incentive.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see any, I don't see any question about his qualifications.
Would you be amenable to making this effective the date of our last meeting?
What was the date? Twenty fifth?
Four, no, what is it? Yeah, twenty-sixth, February twenty-sixth.
Shouldn't we make it the date that we appointed him? He had it when he, he had it when he came through the door.
That's a good point.
So, that would have been.
Clarification.
Was January fourteenth a Monday? No, January twenty-seventh is his start date.
Wait, why do we need, we could just say effective his start date, and you guys can figure.
Sorry.
I don't remember the date, I'm sorry.
So, I will make a motion that we grant the educational incentive for Jonathan Gray's master's degree, effective with the date of his employment.
And that we give him the retro incentive in modest installments. I'm just kidding.
No, track that amendment.
We have a long day.
What is a modest install?
I just think we'll be in the weeds.
Yeah.
So, would this be, would this be prorated for the year, and then it would be?
It is prorated for the year, yeah.
Okay, fine.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. B, on the old business, vote on organizational chart. It hasn't changed since the last time we seen it.
It has not, because I'm just looking for guidance on the animal control officer. Her budget is in public safety. Do we wanna put her with public safety, or do we wanna put her on her own?
I did.
That's my remaining question on this.
I did a little bit of, so, to that point, I did do a little bit of digging, and I did find some municipalities that do consider, like, actually put animal control under the guise of, I'm sorry. Under the guise of, the police department.
I didn't bring it to the song, yeah.
I'm not gonna speak for any employee at all, but what I will say is, there are situations that I know of where enforcement needed to happen. And so, the animal control officer, to my knowledge, does show up at the homeowner's house with
With police.
police personnel, officer, or officers. And so, for me, for safety of our animal control officer, and I should have, and I apologize, Stacy, I did not speak to her before this meeting or at all about this. But I think we might wanna consider putting animal control under public, a public safety auspice.
My thought is, I agree with what you just said. We put animal control officer under the police department, and we put animal inspector under the Board of Health.
Oh, I love that. Good, happy medium.
If the animal inspector goes out to do a routine inspection and runs into problems, she calls in assistance from the police.
Yep.
So, so, she's got one person with two titles, but let's put her in both departments.
I'm actually surprised. I thought people would hate that idea.
That is a perfect representation of our budget. That's how that is set up. The animal inspectors paid for through the Board of Health.
The animal inspector is appointed by the state, but I believe that has to be submitted by the town that she gets appointed. And that falls under, I think, Board of Health, so.
I do wanna ask, I feel like you may have had more conversations about this than me. Is that, has this inspector been raised with the animal control officer?
Has the inspector been?
No, no, has the inspector been raised about the animal control officer possibly making more sense fitting under a public safety department?
Yes.
And they were, the animal control officer is support, like, what are the thoughts here?
So.
We don't wanna make anyone do something that doesn't make sense.
But at the same time, we get to organize the town and how it benefits the town the best way.
But if it doesn't make, if it doesn't make sense.
So, could she?
All this is, is, yeah, right, that's who I, that's how I have it.
That job would be down here, because we have other, other, um, habermasters there, and this is, this is like a, another.
Yeah. So, this, this is an organizational chart that reflects the budget. She's, she shouldn't, I shouldn't say she. The animal control officer really shouldn't be in the Board of Health, because it's a public safety department. So, to kind of map out what the organizational structure of the town is, it should be under there. Have I discussed this in passing with the police chief? Yes. Not a serious conversation. Just kinda like, oh, I think she should be under, it's a public safety department, 'cause I've been saying that for a while. I feel like you have a question coming on.
No, I, I guess my, I guess I do. It sounds to me like what you're saying is, this really is for the sake of a chart, and that putting the animal control officer under police and keeping the animal inspector under Board of Health doesn't change the fact that if there were an issue, and, and the animal control officer felt maybe unsafe, or just wanted some backup, they're still gonna show up at the homeowner's house with a police, so nothing's really changing.
This doesn't change anybody's process. This is reflective of how things are really mapped out in our budget documents. And it's reflective of, in my opinion, how things should be, how it should be organized. She's pretty self-monitoring. She doesn't require a lot of oversight. I don't see this being burdensome.
And it addresses the connection to two different departments.
Will she, excuse me, will the animal control officer position be, like, how does that work in terms of? I felt like now they work with the Board of Health, like, when issue situations arise with animals. I don't know.
But, so, like, so a barn permit, that's something that comes to, she's, she's like both. Because she, as an animal inspector, is doing the barn permits, that's Board of Health. When she needs to go out on a call because an animal might be mistreated, that's the police. So, she's sort of floating in between both of them. But there's a lot more criminal elements to animal abuse these days.
Inspector goes to do a barn inspection and finds violations that go over to animal control. Yeah, just makes the call and says, I need somebody out here.
Right. So, no, I don't find it burdensome. I don't, I think it's relevant, and I think it makes a lot more sense for what's actually going on. Like, what is, she gets the calls in the middle of the night. Oh, a deer's in the middle of the road or something. I mean, she, she goes and takes care of that, so. Responding, the police. So, they call her as well. So, if you vote to approve this, I'll update it, and then this will be our chart, and finally, we've done it. No, it's gonna go everywhere. So, one of my goals was to develop this in conjunction with the business guide, so that anybody coming into town would also know how our organization is set up. But I also fully anticipate putting this on the website, putting it in our budget documents, maybe the town report, like, on the back, so that people know how we're.
Actually, yeah.
How we're set up.
I like that.
So, I will entertain a motion to vote on an organizational chart with the change that we just discussed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, I just wanted to be clear in the motion, that we approved the organizational chart with the following amendments, moving the animal control officer under the police chief, and moving, and keeping the animal inspector under the guise of the Board of Health.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Good work on this. I like it.
Business, award contract, I know, it seems like I'm moving things right along, but.
No, that's good.
We know you're appreciative.
I feel like we've been here forever, but we haven't.
Award contract for ADA Self-Evaluation Transition Plan. I know you have a recommendation for us, Madam, Town Administrator.
Yes. So, hooray. We went out to bid with our, I wrote right in the, the notice that the sole funding for this was our grant award of thirty thousand dollars. We at first got two bids, the first time we did this, well in excess of that. So, we rebid based upon the fact that there were no other funding sources available. We needed to go back out. We revised the scope a bit. And that seemed to do the trick and inspire some great competition. My recommendation is to award to KMA LLC in the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars to conduct the ADA Transition Plan and Self-Evaluation. He can begin immediately, which is very helpful. We're on a timeline with this. And as a local-based company, which is also helpful, the references came back positive, and I'm excited to get started on this.
This is, so I have a couple of questions. So, first of all, this is awesome. So, I know Chairman Pacheco, Town Administrator Aaron Steen, and our ADA Coordinator Jonathan Gill were really involved in this from the beginning, and so I really appreciate that. What I do wanna ask is, so this is less than the reward that was allotted. What happens to that three or four thousand dollars?
So, if he completes everything, and there's some other things that need to happen, you can ask the state to revise your scope. You just say, hey, this is what it came in at. We're finished a little early, but we still have this, this, and this to do. Can we revise the project and add it to that? And if it fits in the overall mission, usually they say yes, 'cause that's the award that's available. And if not, then hooray, for all tax dollars, state included, we came in under budget.
Fabulous. My last question, Mr. Chairman, is when does this work need to be completed by? What is the timeline?
June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Okay. Well, good work.
We'll get it back before that.
It all starts with a kickoff meeting, so.
I have no further questions.
And that's tomorrow, right? You said it can start immediately.
It's right after this meeting?
I just want to stay tonight. To get to bed and just sleep.
All nighter. I have no further questions.
I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we award the ADA Transition Plan slash Self-Evaluation Award bid to KMA, KMA LLC for an amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion?
What was the grant money?
Thirty thousand.
Excellent.
And the schools are included.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that. That was awesome. I also saw that not everyone in the bid list included them, so.
That's right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Good work, Mr. Gill, if you're watching at home.
Okay, so we appoint Kevin Bernardo as Associate Member to the Conservation Commission. He sent us a letter to whom I may concern. I am acquiring about the Conservation Commission. Associate Member Appointment for the Town of Dyton Conservation Commission. I am currently a public health regulatory inspector and a Dyton Board of Health member. I am certified by the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions, completing all eight units of training, fundamentals for conservation commissioners, in which I acquired working knowledge of the effective commission operations, open space preservation, and wetland protection. In addition, I am a Massachusetts Registered Soil E evaluator entitled five inspector. I have found the work to be both challenging and rewarding, and I feel I would be a great addition to my team. My work record will show that I am a dedicated, enthusiastic individual with a willingness to learn and ability to work well either independently or in conjunction with others, and he provided us with a certificate of achievement.
He'd be great for the Soil Board stuff.
I, no, as I was reading it, when it said soil evaluator, I'm like, bingo.
We found our person. Here's some regulations for you to work out.
So, I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'm gonna happily motion that we appoint Mr. Kevin Bernardo as an Associate Member to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Before we move on, I just wanted to say, Mr. Bernardo, I know, I believe he works for Mass Department of Public Health. So, I know your hands are busy. You do a lot for the town, and I just wanna thank you for juggling everything. I know it's not easy, and it's appreciated, your expertise especially.
Thank you.
And that's not just because we want to do the Soil Board stuff.
Yes, correct. We'll be in touch.
But a soil evaluator is not the Soil Board.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm just, it would, whoever put up, you know, their interest in conservation, I would say that too. This next thing, you don't have anything in there. So, the Policy Review Board, as you know, is made up of union representation, and we craft policies specific to employment together. So, with the resignation of Dennis Hazel, I lost a member on that board, and it will now be Michael Barabee. And I'm just looking for an appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Michael Barabee to the Policy Review Board as recommended.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Review and Act on Planning Board Surplus Equipment for Disposal. We received a letter, a memorandum from Kerry Easterday. Please be advised on February nineteen, twenty twenty, the Planning Board voted unanimously to dispose of the following items: one HP desktop computer, one keyboard, one mouse, and one monitor.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request of the Planning Board to list the HP desktop computer, keyboard, and mouse, monitor to the surplus equipment list for appropriate disposal.
Second.
I got one question. We've got equipment lined up at the landfill.
We do.
Are we gonna have an auction again?
We are. Well, Jim doesn't know this, but yes, we are.
Okay, 'cause I saw some vehicles.
Just wait, so, we were just waiting for some to essentially pile up. I was fat, I was shocked to see how much actually piled up so quickly, so. Just wait, so, um, we were just waiting for some to essentially pile up. I was fat, I was shocked to see how much actually piled up so quickly, so. We gotta put one another one together.
Uh, the next item is.
We gotta call a vote.
We didn't.
No, I, I had a question on the discussion.
Yes, you're right, because I was gonna go right to the vote without asking anybody to have a question. You had a question. Nobody's been asking a question. Anyway, okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Uh, act on the, uh, first right of refusal, unit number twenty-five, ten twenty Somerset Avenue. This is at the, uh, the orchard across the street. I am in receipt of the notice of intent to sell your LIP affordable unit at ten twenty Somerset Avenue, unit twenty-five in Dyton. Here are the resale instructions which pertain to your unit. As the deed writer, give, give the town of Dyton the right of first refusal. We will need confirmation from them as to whether they wish to purchase the property or have us find a new income eligible buyer. I have copied and copied the town, but they may also need something directly from you. Let me know if you have any questions. So this, if we refuse to purchase this, which I suspect we're going to, it still remains an affordable unit. And it has to be sold as an affordable unit.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we notify, uh, Reiko Hasha Hayashi that the town declines, uh, the right of first refusal on an affordable unit at ten twenty Somerset Avenue, unit twenty-five.
A second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Review warrant for April elections to either of the constables of the Town of Dyton County Bristol. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You are hereby directed to notify the inhabitants of the Town of Dyton qualified to vote in elections to meet at the Dyton Elementary School for both precincts one and two on Saturday, the eleventh of April, twenty twenty, at seven AM. Then and there to elect by ballot the following offices. Selectman for three years, town moderator, moderator for one year, assessor for three years, two members, Dyton Rehoboth Regional School District Committee members for three years, planning board member for five years, public library trustee for three years, park and recreation commissioner for three years, sewer commissioner for three years, and housing authority member for five years. For this purpose, the polls will be open at seven AM and shall close at five PM. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at each of the post offices, at the town hall, at the main fire station, all in said Dyton, seven days at least before the time of said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doing thereon to the town clerk at the time and place for said meeting. Given under our hand, under our hands this eleventh day of March in the year twenty twenty.
Doesn't roll off the tongue, does it?
No, it doesn't. They, they talked funny in those days.
Right. We don't need to act on this. It's just to read it, right?
Right, and sign it.
But we don't need to vote before we sign, right?
Uh, we usually do. Sign, or, I'm sorry, a vote to sign.
You're right, you're right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, vote to approve and sign the warrant for the annual town election, uh.
Got some tricks.
On April eleventh.
I'm gonna second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. The next item is to review request to waive rental fees.
Yep.
It's coming.
I'm slow.
Dear Board of Selectmen members, for the past, I'll give this to you while I'm reading this. Uh, dear Board of Selectmen members, for the past several years, the Dyton Lions Club has held its annual auction fundraiser at the Town Highway Garage. This year, the Lions are applying for a permit to hold a fundraiser on April eighteenth, twenty twenty, at the Highway Garage. I see on your town property rental policy that the Highway Garage is listed only for cow watchers. And on the fee schedule, no fee is listed for use of the garage. The Lions Club has requested that if there is any fee associated with the rental of the garage, the fee be waived. Thank you for your attention. Don Herback.
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we grant the request of the Dyton Lions Club for use of the Town Highway Garage on April eighteenth for their annual auction. Uh, that we waive any fee for use and require insurance and they have provided us with proof of insurance.
Is there a second? Are you doing that because I hand you that paper? Did you second this?
Yes.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Vote to decline offer of donated land. This is the, uh, Astra Zenica property, including the dam that they were willing to donate to the town. And, uh, we can either vote to accept or reject.
Do you have a recommendation?
Um, yes, uh, my recommendation, sorry, I didn't mean that to come out like that. Uh, yes, I do have a recommendation. My recommendation, after some lengthy due diligence, is that we do not accept, um, the donation for a variety of reasons, but mostly because of the financial liability of owning a dam to the town, the massive maintenance requirements of the dam, and the condition, um, not really the condition, but the taking over some problems that need to be fixed.
Yes, and we discussed this a few meetings ago. We had someone come in and give us an, an idea as to, uh,
What would be up against?
How dams work and that kinda stuff.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to notify Astra Zenica that the town declines the offer of the property located on the south side of Main Street and the west side of Elm Street, up to and including the pond and the dam.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
The reason I was specific is, there were two pieces of land on the north side of Main Street that were offered to us.
I'm glad you raised that.
That are separate and distinct and we could, in effect, kinda connect up with town land for a hiking trail. Do we know if, with this vote to decline the offer for the specific property I mentioned, is the offer to donate the two pieces of property on the north side of Main Street still viable?
I, I do not know that and I never heard back, um, from that when I asked.
But I did ask that.
I recall that, yeah.
So, um, so, so my motion is clear, what we are declining.
Yep.
So when a letter is sent to them advising them, uh, that we declined the specific property I mentioned, would you include in the letter?
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Yeah, but could we include in the letter reference to the two pieces of land on the north side of Main Street?
So when I draft that, I'm gonna include parcel numbers and I'm gonna verify them with you.
Exactly, exactly. And we can match it with the, um, engineer reports, um, whatever.
You had a question?
I feel like I answered it, but I ju, I just wanna make sure. We don't know if, if declining the offer will put in limbo. Maybe they were gonna donate the other two parcels that Selectman Gulart was stating before we declined it. So are we okay to vote here? Should we not?
I think no matter what, you do not, you should not take on this dam, no matter what. I also remember when they discussed all of these and it didn't seem can, one was contingent on the other. And I don't, I remember them talking about selling at fair market value and I don't remember if that was.
Those were different. There were six properties, I think, in total. There were like two on the hill.
But we'll just say, I mean.
The reason why I made that motion so specific and with what you're gonna put in the letter. If they come back with, no, the land on the north side of Main Street is not available, then I think we take a second vote and in effect decline that offer also, cause it was, it was a package deal, but we've separated it. And just to make sure that if they say, no, if you didn't take the whole thing, you don't get the Main Street land either, then we just take a vote and decline that property and send them a letter saying, thank you very much. And basically that ends it. We're declining, uh, we're not getting any of that property.
Okay.
Um, and, and I, I, um, I, I understand the value, value, now I don't mean dollars, but I understand the value of the property on the north side of Main Street. But the cost or potential liability to the Town of Dyton, if we accepted the property with the dam, does not offset what would be, uh, uh, open space value to the Town of Dyton. So if they're willing to give us that property, uh, that's fine. And if they don't, thank you very much for the offer.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
None on my end.
I just, I just wanna mention to the, uh, people of the town who voted to give us the money to do the testing that was required on this property, uh, it was money well spent. We got very good advice, um, and, um, this, uh, motion that I made and that my, uh, board members are, are going to vote on shortly, uh, all the action was done in, both from the, the money, the request for money and the outcome tonight, this was all done in the best interest of protecting the Town of Dyton and its residents.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Selectmen's reports. I just wanted to briefly talk about the MMA meeting that you and I attended in Carver on March sixth. Couple of things, uh, one of them was that the state is, the cannabis commission is thinking of taking over for the state. Town, uh, host agreements on cannabis, uh, agreements that we made with different developers in town regarding either the sale or the growing of marijuana. That's H four-three-nine-eight. MMA opposes that. It would take control away from the towns. Now, we've worked out agreements. They could decide that we're not gonna get the fees that we've been asking for. So it's a little troubling that they offer this to us and then now they wanna take it away. So if, if you're interested in talking to your state rep, uh, please have them, uh, not support. House Bill four-three-nine-eight. You wanna say something?
Yeah, I just, I'm really, so first of all, I wanna thank both my colleagues for presenting this today because I could not attend. That's really interesting to me. I have not actually always agreed with MMA on their cannabis pol, various positions they may have taken on cannabis. By a hundred percent agree with this one. Um, that is, what was the point of all those negotiations we did?
Well, they're allowed in the law, like, they're allowed in the law now that the CCC wants to be able to weigh in on them and limit what certain towns are negotiating and, and, um, that's a, in my opinion, a very much an overstep into a different level of government that is not welcome.
Clearly some cities or towns have abused this and this is why they have some concern about it. But a lot of towns haven't abused it, so why should we be?
Hers is followed to the law to a T, just so everyone knows.
Good faith.
We are.
Yep.
Good faith actors. Yeah, that honestly though, did you, what did, was everyone in the room aghast? I just feel very strongly that if you want to have say in what your government is doing, that's why you run for elected office. How can you, I just don't understand how you can pull strings. I get how state government works, but just pulling strings from Beacon Hill on this, I don't know. These commu, host community agreements could potentially have a big benefit, especially for smaller towns that don't have an opportunity, don't have direct access, uh, to a highway, aren't marketable to a business. I mean.
Well, even when you're sitting down looking at these, you know your community the best. Somebody from the state does not know this community. They don't know it and they can't fight for it and they can't adequately protect it in the nuts and bolts of what an impact like this kind of business could have or would have on a community. So why would they take that away? It, it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, it depends on how much pressure is put on whoever's there at the time. And, you know, if you want some legislation passed, there's some pressure here and some wheeling and dealing there. That, that leaves us, the people who are mostly directly affected by some of this stuff, wait a minute, w-what about us?
Right.
All right. So I would say that the feeling in the room was in agreement with MMA that this is not something we wanna get into. And then I raised the bugaboo of pilot agreements and how, uh, the.
That's the elephant in the wood.
That's all I mean. Uh, no, um, that, um, these, uh, the appellate tax board has ruled in a number of cases that they are tax exempt. And the, uh, I believe it was the town administrator from Carver, Carver has at least nine of these pilot agreements for solar farms. And he talked about how they've been very beneficial to Carver and how they've earmarked the money. Somebody else in the room made the remark that if the solar farm owner is, in the case of a cranberry bog, is using the energy to run that cranberry bog, then they're tax exempt. However, the minute they start selling to the grid, they're a business and they are taxable. So my position, I mentioned the court case that we won and suggested if anybody wants to know the story behind that, uh, they had to, it has to be approved at a town meeting. But certainly, I've spoken, and I mentioned this, I have spoken to Senator Pacheco, I've spoken to Jeff Beckwith and said, please take a look at that pending legislation, because people in the room mentioned that, well, it's somewhere. Um, there has to be an equitable way. We're a green community. We support green energy. However, those solar farms came into communities and were permitted with the understanding they would provide, provide income. So please, look at the legislation and come up with a balance so that communities benefit from it and we still have a benefit to the people who build solar farms. Uh, but there was, that was, I would say, the, uh, the point that, uh, Mr. Pacheco brought up about the host agreements and the solar farms, uh, the people in the room were saying absolutely, they were supporting it. And, uh, um, that MMA was prepared. My guess is John Robertson said if Nancy Gulart's there, she's gonna raise this issue.
Raise this issue or hell on this issue.
Good, I'm glad you have that reputation there. That's good.
We have to keep going after that. And, um, I think that, um, uh, Selectman Pacheco and I didn't have a chance to, uh, obviously didn't discuss, uh, local issues, but I think a future agenda item is the board, this board needs to discuss pilot agreements.
Oh, I would love that.
Going forward, um, because, um, I think, I think it could be beneficial for us. And there is one solar farm, the one that got ruled against at Superior Court, that is headed to the appellate tax board. So we need to look into this and talk to the assessors, uh, to protect the town.
I would say if they are able to provide the town a net metering credit or something where the town generates its energy through solar.
That's been my issue.
That is a benefit and worth listening to. There are so many that, we've asked this, I just want the public to know. We've asked this. I've asked developers this. Are you able to provide the town with something, you know, for energy? And it's always been no. So at that point, well, then what's the trade-off? It doesn't make sense. The town has no benefit.
There was only one issue, other than the fact that we didn't even know who was gonna own it. We didn't have sufficient information. The one issue that was the problem was trying to bring the property owner into the agreement, which is.
I wanna bring this back to cannabis. So my, uh, and I promise, this is my last grievance that I'm airing about this. The other thing that really upsets me about how licensing and permits are being granted right now with the state is that to me, the strings are being pulled in the favor of big money business, big cannabis is what I guess I would call it. And, I mean, that's crippling for little town. I just feel like little towns are always getting the short end of the stick because no, for the most part, big cannabis isn't going to little towns. They're going to places where people actually are, urban, suburban areas. And I just feel like the deck, they're just like stacking that deck against small towns like us.
We had attended that, uh, hearing at UMass Dartmouth at, uh, that the CCC had put on before everything was rolled out. And I remember somebody standing up and campaigning and advocating for micro brewers. Mic, I'm sorry, what am I thinking about? Micro, um, cultivators. But like the smaller entities.
Correct.
And it was such a good point and I feel that it was so lost that, that they did not take on that.
It's just, there's no financial incentive to, or reason to help the, the small startup.
But Selectman Gulart stood up at that time and said, you need to help the small communities who, we're a perfect home for a micro cultivator. We're perfect. So it's, it is sad that it didn't work out this way.
And, and the, the choir we were attempting to sing to that day.
Yeah, didn't, wouldn't answer any question.
I believe the lady was a member of that commission. It was at the UMass School of Law that we went to.
That's exactly where it was.
And it, it, you know, it was like, whatever we said, wait a minute, this, we completely ignored. Cause they're looking at the big bucks and the big corporate, I'll call them big corporations.
The, the, uh, what's that called when you make your money back? The recoup, the return. There you go. That's what it is.
Return on investment.
There's more when you're a big business, anyway.
I just wanted to mention one other thing on MMA. Uh, our meeting today was canceled. There was a call-in meeting. I did not attend it because something, obviously the phone got tied up before I could make the call. I'm expecting to get information from MMA. One of the, the big, they talked about legislation, which is the. One of the, the big, they talked about legislation, which is the stuff that we've covered. But anyhow, MMA legal and MMA executive, they're getting in touch with various state agencies, the governor's office, Department of Revenue, AG's office, because there are problems that are, that potentially could arise because of the virus if quarantines are issued or shelter in place or stay home because certain town charters provide certain things. So that's a whole issue. We don't have a town charter, so I guess we're lucky at this point. But what they're going to be issuing information on is, after talking to the state agencies, how town government could or should function if, in fact, other than the state of emergency, something more severe comes down from the governor's office. So as soon as I get that, I'll pass it on.
Please do. And as you brought that up, I just want to, we've been a little quiet about it, but I want to tell the public that the two chiefs and the health agent and I met today. I spoke with Chairman Pacheco, just considering what mandatory quarantines might mean for us and our operations. We've been diligent, I have to praise the fire chief, who has all sorts of documentation, is looking at his protocols and such, and we're working together, we're having communication. So we're on it and we're monitoring it. There was a health DPH conference call this afternoon. The risk remains low. Yes, cases are rising, but in my opinion, the good news is the locus is identifiable there for that Biogen conference, so that's good news. So practicing good hygiene, self-reporting is very important in managing the contagion.
I did hear the governor's news conference yesterday, and I caught the Rhode Island governor's conference today. Connecticut has also declared a state of emergency. And I personally, I should say, we personally, will not be going to see Tony Bennett at Foxwoods simply because the warning is stay away from crowds. That whole, all of the governors are telling you that, and I said to my husband, it's not worth the risk, so
So we're getting tickets.
Yeah, I will be going.
Hey, well, I guess
Maybe they'll drop the, the buy-ins, it'll be nice and low.
But it's refundable, they're out there. But anyhow, the recommendation was anyone over the age of 60 should, should take these warnings seriously. And so I said, it's not worth the risk, you know, whatever. But anyhow.
Just quickly, on the MMA meeting, it was in Carver, and Mrs. Gulart and myself had an opportunity to get the tour of their new fire station with their three brand-new fire engines. And we were inquiring, and across the street, they're building a new police station, and over here is their new library.
And they got, and they're building a school.
They're building a school. We inquired as to how they're able to get the money. Now, they have 12,000 people, we have a little bit more than 8,000 people, but they have a lot of small businesses, they don't have much industry. And seven or eight years ago, they said they put money aside for, you know, thinking of the future as to what they're going to have to spend for buildings, and it's something we should consider, that whether we're putting in a capital stabilization fund or something, we, we should be up in the ante on stuff like that because we know, three of us know, as well as our town administrator, things are going to be happening soon in our town, that we're going to be looking for other buildings or fuel depot or whatever, and we should be planning on that and start saving the money now so that the taxpayers don't get hit too much when we
Correct.
when we decide the way, this is the route that we're going to go.
They have nine pilot agreements on solar farms on cranberry bogs. So that's their, if you will, industry, cranberry bogs. Over the period of time, they have been able to put enough money, 9 million for that fire station, away. They paid for their library, they're going to pay for their police station out of this. The only thing they're bonding is the school. I mean, I think, I think Senator, Selectman Pacheco and I were amazed. We had the 10-minute tour that took probably 30 minutes because we had, we had questions, and it was, it was amazing what they've done.
So I think, first of all, that's awesome. We also, you know, we, we have, at least since we've been here and definitely since you've been here, Chairman Pacheco, been very consistent about putting monies, like, for example, from free cash into the municipal and capital stabilization funds. I guess my words of advice to my colleagues would be, maybe we should start thinking about, and I'm not giving my opinion either way, it's something we would need to discuss, like a strategy for going forward, but we have always, since we've all been on the board, used free cash to reduce the tax rate, and, and we do that because it's taxpayer money and it's returning it to the rightful owners, right? But I think we should start thinking about putting more money into those stabilization funds because what we're doing is, in my opinion, we're thinking more short-term, which is good for the taxpayer, we should think that way. But what we're foregoing is thinking the burden that's about to be on the taxpayer 10 years out when, and I'm not saying this as if this is going to happen tomorrow or even on any concrete timeline, but we have a, we have a five-year plan, not a wish list, a plan. It really probably is more than five years. But library, highway garage, fuel depot, possibly something with the schools, I'm not sure. That's, that's four right there. I mean, and we, we could probably go even further. Exactly, fire station renovation, I mean, we're do, we're doing renovations here in town hall, not, we're not building new stuff, but we're making improvements. And I just think, great to be thinking short-term, but I really think that we should be thinking about those long-term gains because this short-term burden is going to pale in comparison to the buildings that need to be renovated and/or constructed in the future. And yes, we'll get grants, but there's still going to be an impact to the taxpayer. So maybe we should start putting more in those rainy day funds, that's all.
One good thing is we have
But we have been consistent.
We've got, we have been funding OPEB, which some communities aren't doing anything about. We did
Did you check that stat on Carver?
We should.
Right?
They took all their money and built stuff.
Correct.
We did, we did cover
They've got 20 million in unfunded liability.
We did cover some payment on the police station, as I remember.
Both have been
The thing about the pilot agreements, that you have to be careful about, it's short-term money, they're estimated to last 20 years. You can't spend all that money and build it into your tax base because when it goes away, you've got a levy limit that's sky-high that no one can afford, so you have to manage it wisely. What's really interesting over time, Plymouth Carver, we're a regional school district. They disbanded because Plymouth was the big guy and had all that money from the power plant, the nuclear power plant. And what has happened now is, Plymouth is still Boomtown, but the little Carver who went on its own is now able to put money away from solar energy. Nuclear is gone in Massachusetts. And it's kind of ironic that what has happened, it's completely flipped around. And yet, that town is able to do something. We were totally amazed at the kind of money that has been set aside and the projects that have been built.
And mind you, and I'm not saying this to be controversial, but my understanding too is that they used to be regionalized, they actually deregionalized. So I'm shocked to hear that they deregionalize and then, again, not giving my opinion about anything with our towns. But that's, that's almost unfathomable, like, they're already building their own school. I mean, that's just, it's crazy.
And they have been deregionalized for years because I was working for the school department when people pointed to a region. We were going into a full K-12, and they had gone the opposite direction. And it was because financially, they weren't compatible anymore.
It didn't work, it, it didn't work anymore, yeah.
So
That's good, though, and that experience, that, see, folks, this is why we go to things like this because look at the robust discussion we had about items that we may not have talked about had you both not attended.
I think both of us learned so much that day, it was, it was amazing, just amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
There is no correspondence or acknowledgements minutes except for review the minutes for the regular meeting of Selectmen's meeting of February 26. We have a copy.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept for review the minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of February 26, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes for the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of February 19, 2020.
So moved?
Second.
I just have a question, were the minutes changed from when we, we got them? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Number 36A-20 in the amount of $108,192.99 payroll, and 36B-20 in the amount of $53,085.79 accounts payable dated March 4th be approved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 37A-20 in the amount of $106,434.76 payroll, 37B-20 in the amount of $318,958.4 accounts payable dated March 11th be approved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. We continue to have no public here, so there won't be any public input. And I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief contract negotiation, police chief contract negotiation, and, Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair so declares police union matter.
Second.
Second. Before we take a vote on it, we will not be reconvening. We will not be coming back into an open meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.